Welcome, everybody, to the regular Board Meeting of the Cordova Recreation and Park District on Wednesday, May 28th at 6:30 PM.
Members of the public can view the meeting live on YouTube, and the link is posted on the agenda. Members of the public are hereby notified that meetings of the Board of Directors are recorded, and requests for video recordings may be made to the clerk of the board. If a member of the public wishes to make a general public comment or a comment on a certain agenda item, please submit a blue speaker card to the clerk of the board, and speaker cards are available on the table at the back of the room. At this time, I'd like to welcome up community member Gregory Rubio, and after the pledge, planning technician Andrew Saltmurch will say a few words, and we'll take a brief pause for photos.
Well, it looks like most of you are already, but, audience and board members, please rise if you are able. Please place your right hand over your heart, and please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Two. Audience and board, you may proceed.
Thank you, Gregory.
Greg, if you wouldn't mind staying up, Andrew's gonna share a few words.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to introduce a young leader who has, whose work has left a long-lasting mark on our community. Tonight, we recognize Eagle Scout Gregory Rubio, whose successful project at Veterans Park honors the legacy of the Tuskegee Airmen. Gregory's project first began in June 2023 when he approached CRPD with the idea of commemorating the Tuskegee Airmen, a pioneering group of Black Air Force pilots who broke barriers during World War II. Recognizing the profound historical significance of the Tuskegee Airmen and their connection to the nearby Mather Air Force Base, Gregory's vision for his project centered on the creation of three memorial signs that would share the remarkable story of these Airmen with special focus on their connection to the local community. In August 2024, after more than a year of planning and coordinating, Gregory organized the installation of the signs at Veterans Park with the help of his troop, his family, and CRPD staff. The memorial was unveiled in a heartfelt ceremony on September 7th, 2024, with over 200 individuals attending. Thanks to Gregory's hard work and collaboration with CRPD, Veterans Park now serves as a place of remembrance for the legacy of the Tuskegee Airmen. Gregory's initiative not only enhances Veterans Park with a new educational attraction, but his project also is a demonstration of the power of youth leadership. His efforts have earned a well-deserved recognition. In addition to urging, excuse me, in addition to earning the rank of Eagle Scout earlier this year, in part due to his project, Gregory also earned the 2025 Outstanding Volunteer Award from the California Association of Park and Recreation Districts. And I'd like to present that to Gregory right now. And? There you go.
Yay!
Please join me in congratulating. So, we're gonna do some photos with the board, and...
I think we, I think we have to have a speech, some nice words from the scout.
Sure. If you'd like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Okay. Well, we'll prepare a person here. Thank you, to start. Oh, geez. Yeah, I'm someone very much, who's very much invested in the principle of historical communication. You might have heard of scientific communication, historical communication is the historical aspect of that. So, I am someone who very much advocates for telling one's own story, no matter how small. And if you've seen my little speech I gave during the unveiling ceremony, I went into a lot more detail about that, but just telling little bits of history is enough to protect a large and much more broader story. So, my whole goal with this was to protect the history, and I'm really glad that I have been able to do that. I know there's still more work to be done, and I know there's a lot more history that has to be protected and told, but my whole purpose, the whole purpose of this project was just protecting local history, and I'm so thankful that you all gave me this opportunity to do that. So, thank you.
Do we have any board comments before we go down for the photo?
Gregory, I'd just like to say, from, as a parent of an Eagle Scout, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. Well done. It's a great project.
Yes, congratulations. I didn't get to an Eagle Scout, I wish I did, but I got to life almost all the way, but congratulations, definitely an honor to have. Congratulations.
Thank you. We're always looking for more Scout Masters.
But thank you for your project. That was very great for the community. We definitely need it. So, that was great. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for the project.
Thank you.
If you guys haven't had a chance to get out to Veterans Park in Mather, it's really a sight to see. I've told a lot of people about it. Every time I, I go to like the military thing, do I see people that are veterans, I tell them about this project that Gregory did. It's really fabulous, and it brings a, like you said, it immortalizes this Tuskegee Airmen force, and now everybody is aware of their plight, and they had speeches from people, descendants from the Airmen that were just heart-wrenching, you know, how they were treated. So, I highly recommend you guys to get out there and check it out. It's a nice community.
I saw it on 60 Minutes after your presentation. I thought that was pretty impressive. Like, it started with Greg in our community and went all the way to 60 Minutes on that national forum, so I think it's an incredible project. It was such an amazing event that you presented that to the Tuskegee Airmen that were actually there or relatives of it. It was very heartwarming and touching, and it's just an exceptional volunteer project that you did. So, thank you for your service. We really appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. We'll do our photo.
Photo.
Yeah, we'll get one with mom, too.
So, you know the...
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Up in there.
Make sure.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
We divided and conquered, Dad and my sister, and mom's like, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Let's go next, please. Sorry, sir. All right. That's great.
Where are we?
Here.
Right over here. Item two?
Yes.
We're now at the item two, standing action items.
This is the portion of the meeting where we deal with any requests to join remotely through AB 2449. We received no requests under the emergency cause provisions, and we'll list it as no action taken.
Shelby, will you please take a roll?
Director Danzel?
Here.
Director Irwin?
Here.
Secretary Mattis?
Here.
Vice Chair Langen?
Here.
Chair Sloan?
Here.
That brings us to item B on our agenda, comments by the public.
Members of the public may address the board on topics within the district's jurisdiction that are not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only ask, briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. At this time, we have one public comment, so I'd like to welcome up Catherine Baphis, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Catherine Baphis. I am a server supervisor at Burke Field Restaurant. You probably recognize me from there. My husband is a physics teacher at Cordova High School, so we're both living and working in Rancho. We have two young children, one that's nine and one that's almost seven. They play all of the Rancho sports. We are in soccer, we are in softball, we are in baseball, we are doing synchronized swimming, and this year, finally, we are in the Blue Marlins, so for our first year. And here lies my issue. So, this is our first year joining Blue Marlins, which I was a Blue Marlin when I was little, so, I mean, I know how it works. I know it's based on a lot of parent participation, and, you know, it takes a lot of work to make a meet work for swimming. Anyways, being new to the team, I was unaware when I joined that it required a $500 parent participation fee. Last year, apparently, it was only $250, and they raised it this year because they wanted to encourage more parents to volunteer, or actually kind of force them to volunteer, because that's really high. I do have my stats for all the different sports on, like what their different parent participation rates are. So, just to give you an example, girls softball, they require a three-hour commitment to do the snack bar, or you lose a $60 deposit. Okay? Not that big a deal, $60. If you make your, you know, volunteer hours, then you get your $60 back. If not, it's, you know, $60. For synchronized swimming, there is no parent participation fees. They do ask for help and volunteers, but they don't require it. This one, I think, is the most similar to Blue Marlins in the fact that it does take all the parents to make the meets work, but they don't, they don't make you pay anything extra. Their signup fee is $290, just so you know. Soccer, there's no participation fees. It's a $160 signup, also no fees, but does require a lot of help from parents. You have to, they have all volunteers for all the coaches. Everything is basically on us to help out, right? So, for, this one is, oh, that one's Blue Marlins. It's $290 to join the Blue Marlin swim team with the $500 parent participation fee that is not registered through the district, which I thought was kind of weird, because with all the other sports, you have to register when you sign up. The fees go through the sport itself. This one, I found out, is through the parent, or the parent board. They have like their own separate entity where they take your credit card information, and they will bill you, and if you terminate your card, or for some reason, you know, don't make your hours, they're going to charge you at the end of the year, or at the end of the swim season, the $500. And so, here's where my...
Sorry to interrupt, but we have reached the three minutes, so it's up to the discretion of the board.
I think, I'd like to have her go on, please.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll be quick. Basically, there's seven swim meets. You get two hours per meet, you get one signup per family. That equals 14 hours. You're required to do 20 hours.
Wow.
For five, or you lose your $500. They promised at the beginning that they would provide other opportunities, but they've created a rat race. There's 200 swimmers. There's, I don't know how many families, you know, because they might have multiple kids per family, but that's $100,000. If you have 200 swimmers, $500 per family, per swimmer, whatever you want to make it. I want to know why. So, and I feel like it's unfair, it's not right for our community, it's not right for parents that have small children, that they can't watch during the meets while they're volunteering for hours. You know, it, there's all kinds of problems that go along with this. I have a friend that, that wrote an email out. I sent it to Mark, but I can also send it to other people, and there's lots of parents that are concerned about this, and it's created a rat race for all the parents that are just jumping on it, like the hours. They open up a thing, it's filled in 15 minutes. You're trying to get hours, it's really hard. So, if you have to miss a meet, or you're sick, or whatever, there's only seven, you're out hours, and there's two to three hours per meet, it doesn't add up. So, that's my concern. So, that's it.
Thank you, Catherine. You can talk to someone from the district later on.
Yeah, we have your information. We'll be reaching out to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent calendar, item C.
Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have four items for your consideration. At this time, we receive no speaker cards. However, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there is no public comment.
Any board member like to pull any item?
Chair Sloan, I'd like to pull item C3.
C3 has been pulled. Any others? No? Can I have a motion on the one, two, and four?
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar items one, C1, C2, and C4 as presented.
I'll second that.
Will call vote?
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Irwin?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
I think I know why you pulled item C.
Chair Sloan, item C3 I pulled due to conflict of interest. I do part, work part-time for the Cordova Community Council, so I don't feel it'd be right that I vote on anything that they have in front of this board, so I'll be accusing myself of moving, yeah, back. Thank you.
Can I get a motion from the other director for item?
Hold on, there's gotta be.
C3?
I'll move the Board of Directors' approved consent calendar item C3 as presented.
Second.
Will call vote?
Director Irwin?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Can I get a motion from the other director for item?
Hold on, there's gotta be.
C3?
I'll move the Board of Directors' approved consent calendar item C3 as presented.
Second.
Will call vote?
Director Irwin?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Welcome back. Thanks, sir. Sorry, no fireworks this year.
So, that brings us to item D, presentations. We have a community relations department overview.
At this time, we receive no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment on D1, Community Relations Department Overview? And seeing none, there is no public comment, and I will take it on down to the podium for the presentation, so give me just one moment.
Take it on down.
23 slides? Oh, that's right, okay. That is Shelby's.
Thank you, Shelley.
It's just getting good. You want to, you sure you want to leave?
I'll watch that, too.
Ah, fair enough.
I'm just making sure it pops up here correctly. Is it showing on your guys' screen, or are you seeing a presenter view?
Should I push one? It's on your screen. There it is. Got it. Got it.
Okay. I'll try not to move, so the signal doesn't get interrupted. So, welcome to the department overview for Community Relations, which was formerly called Marketing and Communications, and we're just gonna dive in here. So, today, we're gonna go over who we are as a department, what we do, our playbook, and then what's next. Jumping into who we are, this is our team, so we're an award-winning team of three. You already know me, I'm the communications manager. Elena Berger is our communications and marketing analyst, and you've probably met her out at some of our community events recently. And then the newest addition to our team is Haley Wa, our community relations coordinator. So, if you follow us on social media, you're probably seeing some of her stuff up there, like the very cute geese post out at Hagan Community Park. So, what do we do? There's a vast scope in the work that we do. You probably know us for some of the things on the left-hand side there, like managing the social media platforms, keeping the website updated, producing the recreation guide, and participating in community events. But our team is also responsible for some stuff that's sort of behind the scenes. So, we help coordinate ribbon cuttings and grand openings, we submit district nominations for awards for excellence, we conduct community surveys, we oversee signage throughout the district to ensure consistency in our brand identity, and we also collaborate with consultants on effective messaging. So, there's a lot of that behind-the-scenes work that goes into community relations. And essentially, our core functions can be broken down into four topics: marketing, communications, community engagement, and content creation. So, you can see under marketing, we have brand development, campaigns and promotions, sponsorships, and digital marketing. Under communications, we have our public relations listed there, our internal and external messaging, along with our board communications and crisis communications. For community engagement, we have our partnerships, volunteering, event coordination, and surveys and feedback. And then for content creation, we have design and development, written content, and again, that signage and visual identity that we want to make sure is consistent. So, just for an idea, right, because that was a very high-level overview of our staff, in 2024, we managed 13 social media platforms, or accounts, across seven platforms, with a total of 910 posts with 972,000 impressions. So, to put that in perspective, we're averaging around 2.5 posts per day, and over 2,600 people are seeing our content every day, so we're making lots of impressions there. We also manage content and updates to 164 webpages, which doesn't include the events that we post in our online calendar, and we had 125 project collaborations and developed 118 flyers and signs throughout the year. And with that, our team is also out at 33 events in the community during 2024. So, while our digital efforts help us reach and inform a really wide audience, hence that impression number, we also know the importance of personal communication and connection, and that's why we make it a priority to be out there in the community, meeting people where they are. So, let's move on to our playbook. Our playbook consists of two key documents developed by our team that help influence the way that we function and how we prioritize things. So, first up is our strategic plan. This is a plan specifically just for our team. It's really what we focus on and how we look at things. So, our team updates this plan annually, along with the budget, to really focus on our vision for the upcoming fiscal year and provide that high-level overview for our staff. So, topics typically include that list there. We have our vision, our financial overview initiatives, and then information on the market. Our next one is our brand manual, so this is another internal document that's developed by us and used by CRPD staff, and this one is updated on an as-needed basis. So, in it, we have, you know, things like our valid logos, our color codes, typography, printed themes, digital themes, written communications, so things to make us as a whole be consistent in how we're communicating and presenting ourselves to the public. So, we've kind of laid the foundation of what we do, what we use, and things like that, so we're gonna jump into what's next. Our 2025-2026 vision is to inspire meaningful engagement and elevate public trust by championing "Make This Time Matter" and raising awareness of our unique role as a special district through strategic messaging that connects communities and strengthens partnerships. So, based off of our vision there, you can see that our two main initiatives this year are "Make This Time Matter" and "Special District Awareness." And you've probably started to see "Make This Time Matter" on our social media, on our websites, in our communications, but what does it really mean, right? So, "Make This Time Matter" is more than a slogan, it's our district-wide commitment to creating meaningful connections, purposeful work, and lasting impact. And with this, we're here to show the community that their time with us truly matters and that we're committed to enriching those moments in meaningful ways. So, "Make This Time Matter" is a philosophy that gives us a common language and mindset to ensure that each moment counts. And you may be wondering, how does this fit into what we're already doing? So, we have our mission and vision, which are our guiding principles and community commitment, and "Make This Time Matter" is really a natural extension of that, turning our mission and vision into daily action. And to the side of that, technically underneath, right, we've broken it into three focus areas. We have community relations, which includes partnerships and joint efforts, community, or sorry, employee wellness, which includes our FISH program and employee recognition efforts, and then we also have community engagement, which is everything from customer service to volunteer programs, to supporting local partners like the Rancho Cordova Food Locker and the Folsom Cordova Unified School District Families in Transitions Program. So, it's all about connecting these important efforts under one intentional message. And with that, I'm gonna take a moment to briefly touch on a partnership initiative. So, Stronger Together, American River Communities, is a growing collaboration of local partners united around one goal, to create a more inclusive, compassionate, and connected region. And WildStar Communities is a separate initiative that I'm co-leading outside of CRPD. I'm incredibly proud to share that CRPD fully supports this effort and our shared values around inclusion and community connection. This effort was launched to bring people and organizations together to support one another, to amplify community voices, and to take real action on things that matter the most, like inclusion, visibility, and belonging. So, it's not about one agency or initiative, it's about all of us showing up together for our community. So, there's some info there, I encourage you to check it out. Now, diving back into "Make This Time Matter," where will you see it? This is something that has been and will continue to be incorporated into our everyday language and our district branding. So, you'll see it in places like email signatures, our social media, presentations, flyers. We'll be doing some volunteer spotlights where we want to show our appreciation for community members who are choosing to make their time matter by volunteering with us. And you'll also see this logo incorporated into giveaways and swag items, like the mugs. And so, we've already seen how people are connecting with this new philosophy. Earlier this year, we had some staff out at a local career fair for youth where students were able to join with their parents... were able to join with their parents and kind of go around and meet different organizations. And we had a frisbee out there that had our "Make This Time Matter" logo on it, and a woman was passing by, honed in on it, came up to us, and she was so enamored with the idea of "Make This Time Matter" and how much it resonated with not only her as a person, but her time that she's spending in our parks as well. So we're seeing this really connect with our community and be engaging. As a part of "Make This Time Matter," we've planned a new annual event starting in 2025. It'll be a luncheon that features a brief, brief year in review highlights, since we're kind of halfway through the year, a volunteer recognition ceremony, and some special remarks. And the main purpose of this event is really to recognize and celebrate our amazing volunteers who give back to the community and choose to make their time matter with us. Okay, now we're gonna jump to the second initiative mentioned in the vision, "Special District Awareness." We all know the benefits to our community of being a special district, so we're just really looking to increase awareness of that in our community. This year, we're looking to wrap up the Who We Are series to include park services, Cordova Golf Course, and recreation. And then we'll use some of that content to create some short-form videos to better engage with our community, and then link to those longer videos. We also partner with Explorer Rancho to include information in their welcome backs that go out to all of the new residents who are coming into this area. And we attend the new resident welcome reception, so we're meeting people as they're entering our community and getting that personal interaction. So, our new look. We're constantly taking in feedback and making adjustments to better connect with our community. We all know how fast-paced things are nowadays, so we always use that feedback and readjust and see where we can better engage with people. So one of the things that you'll notice is our new look to our email newsletter that goes out once a month, and then our section in the district-wide monthly board report as well. So both have been updated to a style that promotes higher engagement, and we're excited to see them roll out. And on that note, here's how you can engage with us. So you can follow us on social media, @CordovaRPD.gov, you can sign up for our newsletters, you can attend community events, share feedback through surveys that we put out, or reach out to us at communications@cordovarpd.gov. And that wraps up our department overview. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Shelby. Director Danzel?
None.
Director Yearwood?
I have none.
Director Mattis?
I just wanna comment that I noticed in the board packet that your samples or your icons that were going in there, I really like that look, so that's, if you can keep doing that, that's great.
Absolutely perfect.
You call stuff out there, it's easy, it's much easier to read, much easier to see, and it's just, it's easier to remember too, which is great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I like those little touches, those are good.
Glad it works, that's what we're trying to go for, so I'm glad it...
Yeah, so, just like Secretary Mattis definitely really enjoyed being able to look at the board packet and see all this stuff just right there, so thank you very much for that. I also just really, as you were talking about the "Make This Matter," "This Time Matter", just thinking about my life, and having kids, and then seeing the picture, and just going like, man, like, whether it's, it just hit me in a different area, a different way than you were explaining, but it was still great. And so I really love that, and I love that idea, and I love the graphic and everything, because it really, like, made me, like, pause for a second, go, man, am I making my time matter?
Yeah.
So, great job.
Yeah, and I definitely agree. I think it's something that you can really reflect in, like, personal and professional life of it, so that's great to hear.
Well, I'm glad the cellphone was left out of the guy's hand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was in draft one, we removed it.
Was there one? He was looking down. Thank you, Shelby. You know, I'm with communications and marketing in my background, and I love to see stuff like that. It was a piece of the puzzle that, I was always wondering when it was gonna really take off, like a rocket ship, and you've done a great job of doing that. You're taking us to the stars, and we're blasting off now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a very solid team right now, so it's exciting to see where we can go.
Well, let's make this time matter.
With that...
And you all have some mugs.
Oh. I didn't notice that.
Thank you. Water, like Yeti mugs. But it looked a lot...
Great job, Shelby.
Yeah. Pull the second one. That's how you do it.
That brings us to committee reports.
Item E one, Standing Committee, Budget and Finance, on May fifth, 2025, and Secretary Mattis and Chair Sloan attended.
So I'm gonna let Secretary Mattis start off and get my paperwork in order here.
Oh, yes. Let's go. Standing Budget and Finance. It was a quick overview of the budget. Some exciting projects are gonna be coming through, through there for the district itself. And as far as what you guys are gonna see here shortly, next, in July, you guys will see the preliminary budget, but I think it's pretty solid, and it's exciting to see that we're able to actually get some big projects done coming in for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. So I basically, what I, what I observed was we're taking, the district's gonna take a conservative approach, which I think is a wise choice. You, as you know, we're very healthy, we got AA-plus rating for our bond rating, and I think that with the tariffs, we have to be kind of like sitting there, sort of like, let's see where this, this is gonna go. So I was really impressed by the presentation that Matt gave with all the pie charts and things like that, and just to see the district and how well we're doing. I mean, we are doing fantastic, I'm really proud of us. And I hope we can reach our goal of 1.9 million so that our Mather Sports Center, I mean, our golf course can be self-sustaining, right? That's our goal?
That's the goal.
That's our goal. So numbers are great, we're gonna have a great presentation when we do the preliminary budget. We're gonna have a workshop or something coming up?
In June, yes.
In June.
Oh, that's next month.
Yeah.
It's in two weeks.
Two days away, yeah.
And then we'll see, you guys can see all this in black and white or live in color, as Matt puts it. Thank you for that. Next, the ad hoc committee on the CIP. Madison Yearwood?
You are correct.
Sounds like Lawford.
Madison, the Lawford of Madison Yearwood.
Yes, Madison Yearwood, yes. Shall I go first, sir?
Sure.
All right. I'll try not to take everything. Yeah, we met on five, five-five, I believe, if that's what my notes say here. We're kind of taking a conservative approach this coming year, but still gonna try to get twenty-seven projects over the hurdle, so to speak, over the hump. About three-point-two in budget. What did I write here? Can't even read my own handwriting. It looks like five rec facilities, twelve parks, and two trails, we're gonna have some work done on them. Kind of the big one that we're hoping to do is replace the soccer field, one of the soccer fields out there at the Mather Sports Complex, the south one? Which is the original one from back in the day, so.
Yes.
And, yeah, I'll let you, I don't wanna take everything out of that. Oh, no, that was pretty much what I had there, but it was, this was the first activation of the committee in a couple of years, so it was really nice to be on it. And then, like, as Yearwood, or remember Yearwood said, there's twenty-seven projects, five recreation facilities, over twelve parks, and two trail that are gonna get worked on. And five of these projects are gonna be the heaviest lift for the district itself, and you're gonna see a lot of improvements in some of these parks and facilities, so I think it's gonna be really nice to cap off and have a great, great year for the residents and the folks that use the parks.
Thank you. That brings us to E three, ad hoc committees. The school district, Folsom Cordova Unified School District, and the park district met on May fifteenth, and Director Danzel and I were attending, so I'll let Brian start it off.
Thank you, Chair Sloan. So a couple items that we discussed is the tennis courts down at Hagan Park. Now that the school district has put in their state-mandated security fencing, kind of makes it hard to get to our tennis courts down there, so there, we proposed a swap of land with the school district. That's something that, using the exchange for the tennis courts over at Dave Roberts Community Park. It's not an immediate change, it's something that's gonna take some time for both agencies to talk and discuss how we wanna work on that, but we felt that this is something that needs to be discussed. The Folsom Cordova Unified School District campus fencing project planned and scheduled related to the CRPD parks, i.e. Mather Heights fencing project. As we know, the state has required that fencing goes on around every school campus, and just how that fence is gonna look and how that could play with park facilities, things like that. And then last, WE Mitchell Middle School, their fencing and their park area that's over there with Dave Roberts Park and the tennis courts, where that fence lands, how we could possibly end up moving the tennis courts to a location that is not in conflict with the way the school's gotta put up their fence. So those are the three items that I chose to discuss. Chair Sloan?
Thank you, Brian. Next thing we discussed was the possibility of relocating the varsity baseball field on school property. And I guess the district had done studies a few years ago and found out it was gonna, it would be like three million dollars to do this project. So what they've decided to do is just do some upgrades to the, to the property. Next, we, we had, we reported out on, on our kind contributions that we have given the school district, and I was pretty impressed by that, and so were they. On May seventh, we donated four-hundred-and-fifty new toiletry items and healthcare, home care stuff. December six, eighteenth, staff donated fourteen-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars in Target and Dollar Tree gift cards to the school district. And on October first, 2024, staff collected and donated new socks, underwear, coming to value of eleven-hundred dollars. So I thought the staff should be applauded for that kind, generous donations to the school district. Yeah. Also, on, I don't know how to date here, but on May fourteenth, it looks like, or that's maybe, next year's coming up, there was an Employee Appreciation Day by the school had at Hagan Community Park, and I guess in the pavilion area, and five-hundred staff members and their families attended. This DJ and food truck event in our park, and they just loved it, had a great time. We just, and then we, finally, we discussed a dormant foundation that the school district has, is thinking about, I guess, rekindling or bringing back to life, and I'll keep you, I'll keep you upgraded that, because I don't know, I don't know where that's going right now. It'll be some type of Folsom Cordova Unified School District Foundation like, like our, our foundation that we have for the park district. And that's it.
I have a question on that, the Mitchell fencing, is that gonna go all down Zinfandel?
I'm, except for Ms., I'm not actually sure, I haven't looked at their plan, but I know that it...
That's all they started.
Outside, the tennis court does interfere or would be part of it, and like some of the other facilities, our tennis courts at Hagan where their fencing brought our property into theirs, so I believe it's the same, but I haven't looked at the front side yet.
Yeah, 'cause I wanna know if it's gonna fence off that baseball field.
That property, I know the school district's property runs all the way to that parking lot.
Director Danzel, can I help?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, bet. So, yes, their fencing basically is fencing in that field. It's leaving the parking lot open for people to park in the parking lot and go into Dave Roberts Community Park. So we've worked really closely with the school district so that Dave Roberts Community Park could still, people could still park and get access. And so it basically runs next to the parking lot and then goes straight up to where their asphalt is, right up by, you know, their school. And then what they did is, because we have that softball field that's kind of half on our property and half on theirs, they allowed us to have that softball field, and so then the fencing went around their path way down to the, to the end of the street. So we did, we actually got a little bit of property out of this fence property, this fence project, and we didn't lose any kind of amenities at the park.
It won't affect the majors when they play there, like, they won't be...
It will, it's, it's, it's actually, the fences really right up to the parking lot, which is actually further than the outfield that that major's field utilizes. So it gives, it gives that major's field plenty of room to play.
And they won't be locked out by chance?
No, they, they do the gates, they've done a really good job of having access in and out of their school property as well as Dave Roberts Community Park. Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? What kind of fencing is it? Is it chain link? Is it...
It's, yeah, it's black chain link. It's, it's nice, it's, it doesn't look, it's, it's not, it's different than, I think it's different than the one at high school.
At Cordova, it's like, like Rod High.
But, well, it's in different places at Cordova High School, it's different, but it's not, it looks not...
It's like a thicker coated.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering.
It's, it looks nice.
And it's like, is it tall?
Six foot?
Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause I think there was also, I forgot to mention, that the fencing will be at Riverview, and the question was whether the cricket field would be...
So the Riverview is already done, that's been done for years now.
Is that, is that, is that still okay for the cricket people?
Yeah, so again, we worked with the school district to ensure that the cricket players and the teams had enough space, and so that we were able to align the fence where the cricket still can have a cricket match, practice, or games. And then they, the school district has, has given us the combination for a lock, and so then we give that combination out to any teams that reserve the field. So that's part of our joint use agreement with the Folsom Cordova Unified School District, and so we're able to program on that field and give access to anybody who, we give permits for the use of that field.
That's great, that's a good partnership. That brings us to our regular calendar.
Item G one, adopt resolution twenty-four slash twenty-five dash twenty-eight and authorize the general manager to sign a lease agreement with Vertical Bridge for a cell tower easement on Heron Landing Community Park, APN zero-six-seven dash zero-four-three-zero dash zero-two-nine dash zero-zero-zero-zero. At this time, we receive no public comment cards, however, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it over to CFO, MacAdel.
Thank you, Shelby. So if you recall, back in 2023, you were brought forward a presentation. The AT&amp;T was interested in an easement in construction of the communication tower at Heron Landing Park. Of course, this type of project takes time, there's steps that need to be done. As a matter of fact, we have our representative from Modus, Vertical Bridge, here today, Matthew Norton, who's gonna give a quick presentation about it. Don't mind. I think it's, is it?
I think it needs to be opened.
All right, thank you for your patience, I know you're about your kids tonight, so...
I appreciate it. Matthew Norton?
All right. Good evening, members of the board. Matthew Norton, with Next Edge Networks, formerly Modus. I'm here representing Vertical Bridge for their proposed cell tower installation. We are proposing to replace a seventy-foot light standard with a ninety-five-foot stronger pole to support two carriers. This proposed installation will enhance AT&amp;T's network and reliability in the area, not only to Heron Landing Park, but the surrounding neighborhoods. No matter who you are with as a carrier, you can always use emergency 911 services through any, any of those, so it'll enhance that coverage. And we made it colocatable so that if another carrier is interested, we don't have to build another tower in the community, and we do have interest from another carrier already at this point. So it's kind of the purpose of the tower. Our outreach efforts, I think we did a thousand-foot radius from the tower location, we ended up hitting a little more than four-hundred residents. We had two community meetings, one on June twenty-fifth and one on... We had two community meetings, one on June 25th and one on June 27th. The first one was held at the Anatolia Clubhouse, and we had one resident show up and voice her concerns about EME. We did have RF expert there that went over kind of his, his own report that he did, was able to answer any questions that she had. We did give her a follow-up number so that she could reach out with any more questions, and we actually didn't hear from her again.
I'm sorry, what did she have questions about?
EME, electromagnetic emissions, RF emissions, yeah. Health and safety concerns. And then we had one on June 27th, and we held that at Heron Landing Park, and we didn't have any resident show up to that one. Construction and park activities, this is one we're going to have to work really closely with the park in terms of when we want to build. Different times of year, you have different activities going on. You know, sun sets later, you don't need the lights as much. So we'll do our best to minimize park disruption. Construction will be done during business hours, so I don't see too much park disruption going on except for the light being down. We're replacing the light next to the existing light, so the light fixture itself shouldn't be down for too long. We can always do a temporary light in the meantime. But again, we'll work closely with the park in terms of mitigating any of those activities that are going on at that time. I do have a footprint here. You can see we have a, an access easement and a utility route that will be kind of determined on smud if we can actually come from there, but that's kind of where we're going. And I believe it's, so it's really hard to see, I think it's a 50 by 30 lease area, so we have room for two carriers in the footprint. It is screened and covered on the top. There's a tennis court there, so there was some concern about the tennis balls coming in, so it will be fully enclosed, both structures. And then you can see the, the side view, the 70-foot to 95-foot and what it would look like with two carriers on it. So we would get it permitted through, through the planning department with two carriers already. And then these are our photosing views. And I know they're a little, little hard to see, but you can see there's one view, two views, three views, and the fourth view. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Director Danzel?
None.
Director Yearwood?
Just to make sure, I missed this picture when I was looking at it earlier. So the pole, all of the, it'll just look like a light pole. There won't be a standard stuff on the exterior of the pole? Or will there be these, I don't know, I don't know what you call these things?
Antennas.
The antennas, I guess? Will these be contained inside the pole itself or will they be visible?
No, they're visible. So if you can see the photosings.
Yeah, I was like, I thought we were, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood. That's it.
And then all, all of the cable and everything's going to be ran inside the pole?
Inside the pole, yes.
So nothing's going to be dangling down?
Correct.
Okay. Even when the second carrier's added?
Correct.
Okay.
How fast would we get replacement lights if, I mean, with those coming down, those tennis courts are being used a lot?
Yes. Well, so that light isn't, I don't think has tennis court lights on it. That is specifically for the softball field.
Oh, softball.
Yeah. So I'm working with, I think it's DECO. We'll work closely with them in terms of, once we get the pole up, having them come out, reinstall the light and getting it all set up, because you have to have, you know, the ankles right and all that stuff.
Oh, for sure. Thank you.
I like that, that we're doing this because we're, it has two purposes. And I noticed the lights are below underneath, so they don't have to worry about changing molds going past them. And I think a lot of football fields that I've noticed have the same kind of stuff on their light standards. Folsom has it, I think Cordova has it, at their, on their football field. So I think if it gives the community better service, I think that's great. It's a wonderful idea. In fact, at the conference, we had one of our breakout sessions was all about the, these poles and light, the poles that you're putting up, all different types of them for the communication. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, yeah, it's definitely going to help, because I used to live out there with AT&amp;T. I mean, it's, it's going to be a lifesaver to have that out there, so that's nice.
Any other questions? Nope. So do we have a motion on this?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 24-25-28 and authorize the general manager to sign a lease agreement with the Vertical Bridge for cell tower easement on Heron Landing Community Park.
I have a motion by Secretary Mattis.
Second.
I have a second by Director Danzel. We'll call them.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
No.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
That brings us to item G2.
Item G2, approve the White Rock Community Dog Park Concept Plan and authorize the general manager to instruct the Park Planning and Development Department to proceed with the preparation of construction documents for the dog park. And at this time, we have received no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it over to Principal Planner, Terry Zeller.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. I'm trying to get this up, I think. Just have to change the screen. Oh, there it goes. Let's see. Okay. Can everybody see on their?
No.
The same presentation was up, so we have to close that one out.
Hang on, Matt's coming up.
That's going to sign in. Yep. Is it not open? That's going to sign in. Yeah, it's Adobe.
Perfect.
Oh, there it is.
All right.
Okay, let's, let's, let's-
Sleeping Dodge Light.
Oh, no!
Try again.
Oh, right, hit cancel, right-click on it, do it in a reader.
I see it.
Yep, it's probably going to close again, so try it in reader.
Yeah.
Open with, ah, sound option.
Oh, you don't have it.
Is there a way to sign in real fast? Okay.
You can see it on our screen here.
Yeah, but it, no, we put it there.
On the land there.
Yeah. Oh, just pulled that from the, from the broadcast.
Continue with that.
Oops. Good, fullscreen it. Okay, all right. Sorry about technical difficulties. We're still up? Okay, well, great. So good evening, Board Chair Sloan, Board Members and General Manager Larkin. So tonight, I am requesting the approval of the White Rock Community Dog Park Concept Plan and thought I could go over a little bit of a summary of the project for you. So, starting with the background, we did receive funding from the city of Raja Cordova, and this funding was actually part of over $15 million in coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, also known as ARPA funding. So the city council approved an initial allocation of ARPA funds in June of 2022. So out of this allocation, $2.5 million was set aside for investment in neighborhoods, and specifically neighborhoods disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. And so they, based on community input, they determined that a dog park would be a good supported use of funds. And also determined the location as White Rock Community Park. And so we set to work looking how we could best create a dog park within this existing community park. So you can see the concept in front of you. And so we had actually hired Calendar and Associates to develop the park and the construction, which you can see in your packet also. And the concept was actually informed by two separate outreach efforts, and I think board members were at both of those and appreciate that participation. So the first was a party in the park event at White Rock Community Park in July of last year. And the second one was an evening that we held recently in April at the White Rock Community Center. So based on those two community outreach events and working closely with Calendar and Associates, we have the concept in front of you tonight. And so really what this concept tries to do is, on the lower portion of the, of the concept plan, that is actually the sound wall for I-50. And so what we tried to do is utilize the existing barriers and features that we have out there and build a park around those. We wanted to maximize the amount of funds that we could put into actually be design and the amenities of the park and not necessarily rebuilding things that we could already use on site. Originally, the park, the dog park was envisioned to be a lot closer to White Rock Boulevard, and that was determined to be not at the greatest spot at our first party in the park outreach event. So what we did do was looked at moving it into the very back portion of the park, just to the right, lower right-hand corner. You can see it says existing cell tower. That'll help orient you to where we're at on the design. So, concept plan itself, it features a three-section dog park, and it is going to be utilizing the existing healthy turf. We're not going to tear the turf out and replace it or put decomposed granite. We're going to utilize the existing turf that's already out there. And we feel like the size of the park and the way that it's designed, we'll be able to continue to provide healthy turf. So the design is very similar to Hagan as far as its function. We do have a three-section park, and that allows for two of the sections to be active at a time and allowing the third section to rest to maintain the health of the turf. So each of those three sections also will feature an eight-by-16-foot shelter with bench seating. It's going to be, each one will be set on a large concrete area with a watering station at the far end of the concrete pad, and we wanted to design it to run off into a cobble area to eliminate the mud pit that you see in a typical dog park around a watering station. We all know how messy those can get. So we're trying to proactively design it, design some of the issues out of it. So each section will also have its own double gate entrance, separate, separated enough from the other entrances to limit the contact of small and large dogs when entering or exiting the designated section. And as we talked about with the other project that was before you, this will also have a six-foot chain link fence, and that'll enclose all the areas of the dog park. And each section will also have both existing trees. We'll keep the healthy ones. There's a couple that need to come out that are not doing so well. But we also have in the design a number of additional trees that we will plant to supplement the mature trees, because shade was one of the big requests that we had when we were going through the public input process. The design is made to fit in and not interfere with the existing sidewalks, so every sidewalk that you see in the design is already pre-existing out there, except for the little area where it says proposed tree and picnic table in the center there, across from the center section area, too. And it's also going to work alongside the Cal-Am Waterwell Project that's going to be sited to the east of the dog park in that triangular corner on the southwest edge of the, of the park itself. So the location, like I said, was favored by the public to give as much distance from the noise as possible to the homes in the neighborhood on the north side of the park and also keep as much of the existing turf in the back section as possible. So the size of this park, if you're wondering in relation to Hagan, if you've been out there, it is slightly smaller than the Hagan Dog, Community Dog Park, but the sections that are proposed here are more square, as there are some pretty long runs at Hagan. So we tried to design this to be a more usable area for folks, whether they have large or small dogs. And there's going to be up to four benches situated in each of the three sections, so people will be able to break away from the main seating area and also follow shade throughout the day. So also for maintenance, it's hard to see on the design, but on the lower left-hand corner, it says maintenance gate. And we have gates that are lined up along the sound wall that will run along the ridge, the natural ridge of that area. And that, those are all designed to make maintenance as easy as possible as far as the mowing and other pickup and repair issues. So a mower can basically open up one gate, get through there, and pretty much know how he's going to go with his mowing pattern and get that done as quickly as possible. So there's also a central shady gathering space that's kind of in the pocket of all three of those areas. And that is designed to have a couple of picnic tables and also some additional shade. But those, that space is being included as an add alternate. If the bids come in favorably, we will see about putting that in. But if not, that's an option for, if we get good bids. Like I said before, the fiscal impact of the district is zero because we are fully funding it through the dog park project monies that came through ARPA funding from the city. And our cost estimate is predicting the total for the cost of design and construction to still meet under our half-million-dollar allocation from the city. So we are contributing the project by providing site and staff labor and oversight of the project. So if the board approves the concept plan, the staff will continue to work with Calendar and Associates to develop construction documentation. Then we will bid out the park for construction. So once those bids are in, Park Planning and Development will come back to the board with a request to accept the lowest qualified bid and start the work for the project. So this is expected to happen in the fall of this year, with construction expected to start shortly thereafter. And I can take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Terry. Director Danzel?
I have none.
Director Yearwood?
I don't have any questions.
Secretary Mattis?
The trees that you're going to plant, those are the circles?
Yes, that's, yeah, the trees that are in the dash lines, I believe, the existing ones.
Okay, I see that now.
And so all the larger circles are the ones that we're suggesting planting.
And then with that, can we try to plant the biggest trees that we can with the budget? Because those 10, 15 gallons just take forever to grow.
You don't want somebody to pick it up and walk away with it?
No, I just want some of the big, so that way, or at least, you know, budget for, or at least work around that, if we can get some bigger trees that we can supplement, you know, in there.
We'll do.
Try to get some bigger trees, at least over the shaded area, where the benches, that area.
Yeah, we agree that we want to try to provide effective shade as quickly as possible.
Vice Chair Langen?
Yeah, I mean, mine was more along the lines of the trees and just how long it would take to get that shade, but it sounds like you guys are doing great with it, so it looks great. It's out of time.
And the other question, too, was the slope. So with the existing turf, it's sloped enough to where it can drain so that we don't get mud, you know, in the middle of the park, or there's like a mud pit that will show up?
Yeah, the, the topography out there is like a gentle roll, and it's, it's fairly complex as far as how the, the ground rolls. It is interesting, there's kind of like a ridge line or a hump, like a speed bump, or along the back, in that it pitches back toward the wall for a portion, and then it pitches back toward the, the park on the other side. But it's not a uniform, yes, slope, so there is drainage out there. And if there are issues where we hit, you know, pockets where it gets muddy, we can probably look at doing something like a French drain or something to try to combat those issues. But we certainly don't want to re-sculpt and nuke everything that's out there for the, for the cost.
So I want to assure my fellow directors, I attend to the meeting- So I want to assure my fellow directors, I attended the meeting, and everything that Terry addressed here redesigned was brought up by the, the community that came out. And the district just listened to what they had to say and followed it to a T here. And I want to thank you for that, especially down to the little rocks and the catching the drainage. Because they did mention it at the Hagan Park, that water can get on that, on the cement part, and it can get very slippery. So it could be a tripping hazard. But thank you very much. This is wonderful. I love every part of it. If they could start planting the trees now, like tomorrow, that would even give it even better a chance to have a lot of shade out there.
Six months' worth.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, okay. Because the benches were a thing that I think were, we wanted, they wanted added because they didn't want people bringing their portable chairs, and then when they get broken, they just leave them there.
Yeah.
So I just think that this is great. So I think we're ready to take a motion on this. Zach?
Chair Sloan, I'm here with the Board of Directors, approve the White Rock Community Dog Park Concept Plan and authorize General Manager to instruct the Park Planning and Development Department to proceed with preparation of the general, or the construction documents.
And a motion by Director Danzel?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Secretary Mattis. We'll call both.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. That brings us to H on our agenda here, Board of Directors' Items.
Item H1, Board Officers' Appointments Elections. There is none. Item H2A is the Training Report. In this month, Chair Sloan, Director Yearwood, and Director Danzel attended the CARPD conference, not the CSDA conference that's listed on the agenda. And then item H2B is the Community Activities Report.
So Director Danzel, why don't you start it off? Since you were president.
I was president, was, I can honestly say was, now past president. Conference is always a good time. Lots of education goes on. It was a unique year, moving to San Diego for the first time. As I said in my, my speech to the, the members that morning, the board and the committee at the time when we picked that location were completely against it, said it wouldn't work. It was going to be a failure. And I said, well, can we just try? And they agreed to let me try. We ended up with more attendance in San Diego than we've ever had at a CARPD conference, more vendors than ever, and more sponsorship dollars than ever. Lots of, lots of sessions to go over. The two that I'll speak on, or the two that I either led or helped lead or co-lead, is Board Member Round Tables. It's, it's always good to sit down with, with other board members and discuss what's going on in their districts and see how the collaboration can happen and make sure that districts talk to each other. We're not islands and we run through a lot of the same problems. So we get a chance to discuss that. I mean, simple questions. We're asked, one of, one of our CARPD board members and a fellow board member of mine at CARPD from East Bay asked a crazy question, how many people actually evaluate their general managers prior to, you know, the day of, when the general manager walks in and says, oh, here, it's time to review me, you know? Something we do on a yearly basis without a problem, but there's other districts that literally a general manager walks in and goes, okay, here's, here's, here's my review. Can we do this right now? And general manager doesn't, doesn't even leave the room to, for the board to discuss what's going on and how, and how to review things like that. So it was, it's kind of interesting. And then also my, one that I led was newer board members, under four years, getting a chance to ask some of the questions to the more experienced board members. Some, I, I met several younger board members, some as new as got appointed two months ago, didn't know that they could turn around and vote no in, in a motion. It, it happened here tonight. It, it's not a big deal. It happens, there's a, you know, majority vote, or it doesn't pass, whichever, it doesn't really matter. But they didn't know that they had to. They believed it had to be a 5-0 vote every time, even though they didn't consciously feel that they needed, they wanted to vote on it. They turned around and said, well, that's what the rest of the board wants, so I'm going to go ahead and go with it. And they thought there had to be a consensus. But yeah, they, they all felt that it needed to be a consensus, which was, was unique. And it gave them a chance to ask that question and, and be told, no, it doesn't have to be a consensus. We can, you can vote, you know? But then also, who do you, how do you vote? Do you vote with how I feel as a director, or do I vote how my constituents want to vote? Things like that. Just, it was very unique. It was a good, good time to educate. And some senior board members didn't, they, they had some things that they learned out of it, too. I got lots of great feedback from, from the board members after that session and said, hey, this was one of the best sessions I've ever attended when it comes to roundtables because it was engaging, you got to talk and, and just find out what's going on in the rest, the rest of the state and not just in our district. And in Sacramento, we've got lots of small districts. And they feel sometimes that they're islands and they don't have anybody to talk to. So we, we, you know, opened the door to that and told them who to, who to call, who to reach out to, and so they can move forward. So that's the end of my conference report, other than I'm no longer president.
Director Yearwood?
Thank you, Brian.
Good job. Are they going to go out in the display case?
They'll go out in the display case.
All right, excellent. We took one already, I think, didn't we?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't first acknowledge the award-winning Andrea White from the...
Woo!
It was, it was a great conference. It was, apparently it was held at Rick's Youth Stomping Ground. As we're pulling up, I used to go to a place that had a huge tower, and as we're pulling in, there's this huge tower out front. So it went by a different name back in the day, apparently.
Vacation Village.
Yeah, Vacation Village, so. I attended a few sessions, of course, as required. Developing Park Standards was the first one. I will admit, a lot of these sessions, to me, felt like they are kind of geared more towards GM, GM and staff. But there was good information in there. I learned out a very interesting fact, in the U.S., the average home has 1.0 youth 18 or younger in their households, but dogs are 1.6. So this guy was pro-dog parks. He goes, why don't we have more dog parks? So, and we're working on that, so there we go. Other, you know, just some things, you know, it's best to have a park be front, facing the front of a house as opposed to the back because of security issues, things of that nature. He was a big proponent of buying, doing everything the same. Your irrigation system should be the same irrigation system, so if you need to buy sprinkle heads, you're buying bulk sprinkle heads to save money, you know, just interesting. I, I thought it was funny, he goes, document everything, no handshake deals. I didn't know this was the '60s again, but. And his catchphrase, I wrote this down, change is good if it is good change. So that was the morning one. He, he thought, he was proud of it, so. Let's see here. And then we attended a, one about, what was that one? The how to win the cell tower lottery. I think there were eight people in there, and four of them were from our district. So it wasn't a well-attended, it wasn't very well-attended. I think that's about accurate if I remember correctly, so. He just had some interesting statistics. What did he say? I can't remember, I don't know if I wrote this down wrong. Did he say 40, 43,000 or 432,000 active cell sites in the U.S. in the last 30 years? I thought there, I had too many zeros, but, that's right? Okay. And then 3,000 macro sites are coming up, and parks are the preferred place to put them. And he had this cool thing where cell towers are made out of cacti, looked like cacti, a water tower, like the WB water tower, is the only way I can describe it, so. But that was day, that was day one. So day two, the one I really enjoyed was, it was beyond the buzzwords, understanding inclusion play, inclusive play, excuse me. So that was a very interesting one. There was a lot of, it was, it had a lot of interesting facts in there, you know? Risk is important for development, a holistic approach that meets the needs of all, that's what an inclusive park is. A lot of places tend to do integrated, which is basically they get one piece of equipment in there that is specific to a certain group. So there's a lot of things on that. They specifically talked about, they used two parks as an example. There's one in Hayward called Mia's Dream. And that one was really cool because the dad apparently sketched out the outlook, the, how it should look on the back of a Starbucks napkin, and they made that real. They made that happen. So that one's really cool. And the other one was one in Santa Barbara called Gwendolyn's Play Park. Play Park? Can you, plague something, ground, sorry. But the cool thing about those is these two parks looked massive. And not to say an acre isn't big, but they were only each one acre. So I thought that was really cool. So that was very interesting. And the other thing I really enjoyed on that day was the roundtable. Where past president of CARPD, Danzel moved everybody into two groups, the for newer and the for an older group. Some of the same things, they, they seemed to be, the new ones weren't sure, they seemed to be hesitant about asking questions. They weren't sure if they were allowed to ask questions. Ask questions, ask questions, ask questions, is what I told them. Again, they, they thought that you had to be 5-0. You had to have a consensus to vote, you know? If somebody voted yes, everybody was voting yes, kind of thing. I wrote this down, this is a very interesting thing I heard from somebody on the older group side. He apparently is only a board member at meetings. He actually said that. He's only a board member when he's attending a meeting. I thought that was very interesting. And there's still a ton of them confused about the Brown Act and why do we still have the Brown Act? So that was, yeah, that was enlightening. It was, I'll be honest, it was kind of frightening to hear some of the things that were coming out of the ones who've been around for a while. So, but there was a, I can't remember what district is, the one that had the two new guys in there, and the guy just became the president, I can't, Inland?
Valley White.
Valley White. Very two nice gentlemen who just came onto their board and had a lot of questions. They were really nice guys, so. Sounds like that'd be a good breakup session for the next one, is the Brown Act.
Yes.
Well, some of them said they don't even know why we have it. And I said, well, you might, you might want to read up on that again, so.
I thought this would happen.
Did we take everything?
Director Danzel and Yearwood talked about everything. That leaves me with the food, was really good.
How about the location? Was the location okay?
It was the best food we've ever had. How do you go wrong with being out in Mission Bay, you know? Most of the receptions were outside before you'd go inside for the awards. But like Director Danzel said, it was largest turnout we've ever had. One thing we did differently this year was the, we had a breakout by district size, sort of tables, where we had this big room, and you would sit in areas that if you were a small district, you would sit together. And if you were a bigger, larger district, medium-sized, you sat together. And then they had scenarios to discuss, and, and someone would speak to the table of how their district handled that challenge or something like that. And I thought that was very interesting to, to compare the challenges that you would have as a large district compared to a smaller district. Cell tower thing, yeah, 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 crazy. We had LaFco 101, which is interesting, in grant writing readiness. Of course, the roundtable things are, I think, the strongest thing. And I remember many, many years ago, when I first attended the first one, they had an orientation one. That's where I learned about my true role as a director and what I really, you know, this is my one employee right here. So that's what we have to remember, and that's the thing. And then our boss is the community. So it was a great, a great, a great conference. And kudos goes to Director Danzel and his conference committee who came up with that location. Next year, it's going to be in Monterey. Just let you guys know. So they'll be able to drive and take their, their branding material. They didn't ship down their branding material, so there was no logo of the CARPD anywhere, except on the podium. So that's it. Where does that take us now? Community Activities Report.
Yep. Item H2B is the Community Activities Report.
I recommend that Rick, Chair Sloan, go first.
Oh, no way. Danzel go first. I gotta, I gotta get my stuff in order here. Where is it?
Is he really going first?
No.
Okay.
Danzel, you go first.
One, two, three, four, five. I have six items, five of them being California Association Recreation Park District Committees. Ledged Committee on April 17. Always a lot of information going on there in the Ledged Committee. We've, we were lucky and got a bill moved to a two-year bill that could eventually hurt, hurt our park district, it wouldn't currently, but it is a stepping stone to push it, pushing domino number two in a sense over that would eliminate all, all funding to, to park districts in the way of when we have new housing come on, we would get $0.00 coming from, from the housing market, which doesn't drop the housing, housing costs. They would still charge, they would still charge the same, but that money would be going into their pockets and not into, not into ours to help fund parks. April 25th, CARPD Conference Committee. It was a final step, just making sure that we're ready, seeing final, final dollars, dollars and cents on the conference committee, making sure that we were just ready to go. May 9th, CARPD Finance Committee. Gar, make sure that next year's finances, just like we do here at, at our park district, looking at next year's budget and saying, okay, here we are, this is where we're looking, this is what we're budgeting. I already ported out on the May 15th, CARPD, Folsom, Cordova Unified School District, Two by Two. May 21st, CARPD Board Meeting. Before we start the conference, the board gets together to have our monthly meeting to discuss everything that's going on and the last-minute final conference things. And May 22nd, 23rd was the CARPD Conference, which I already reported on. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Director Yearwood?
I have nothing additional to report on.
Okay. Secretary Langen?
I mean, Secretary Mattis?
I attended the Cordoba Community Council Kids Day in the Park. It was a great event, lots and lots of people there, especially lots of vendors. My only suggestion is if there's a way for an event like that, is if we can put a stop to the swag, the schwag that's given out. Because with five kids, the amount of stuff that's collected, you know, I, I understand, you know, vendors, they want to give stuff out, they want to do branding. But maybe we talk about rules, if they want to do that, it has to be useful things like pencils, pens, notepads, things like that that kids can use for school. Because that's what I was trying to encourage my kids, was like, no, 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 we don't need a squishy truck, you need pencils for school. Because we're always, I don't have a pencil, I have a pencil. There's a pencil right there. So, but other than that, it was a great event. Kids got to do the, with the SAC County Silver District, they had this set up there with a truck, and they got to use the robot to go in the tunnel to go see the stoppage. They had fun with that and all the other activities. I already ported out on the Budget and Finance Committee, as well as the Ad-Hoc Committee for CIP, for the CIP. And I also attended the Levy Project, the American River Levy Project, held by the Central Valley Flood Protection Agency Board on May 23 via Zoom. That was another interesting meeting, long meeting of the project that's coming. And I think they pretty much presented pretty much the same materials they had, and there were still some great Q and As for the project as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair Langen?
Yes, so I'm going to make this short and sweet. On, on May 8, the Rosemont Community Association Annual Meeting, we have a table there, and so just able to go hang out and then also speak for just a couple minutes. One of the biggest things I was able to share with them is that with the Rosemont High School Pool being open on Fridays for the three Fridays on June 20th, the Splash and Save, and July 18th, Pool Chilla, and then August 8th, the Back to School at the Pool. So just excited for that, and they were excited to... So just excited for that and they were excited to hear it. And so just a great time to be out there.
Thank you very much. So I'll go, I'll go down the line here fast, guys. On April 19th, I attended the Butterfield River East Community Association's Easter Egg Hunt, which was a very successful day. The weather was beautiful and we had a good turnout and kudos to the Breka and Andrea right there. I think they did stuffing the eggs the night before and I think she got up early and scattered them all over. On April 26th, I had the pleasure of going to the Arbor Day Celebration at Rosemont Community Association, Rosemont Community Park. They also held a Earth Day Celebration that same day. If I remember right, it was a little drizzly, a little drizzly during the morning hours and that probably kept some people away, but as it never really picked up any worse, it got, actually got better as the day went on, more people came and it was a nice, a nice event. They were able to plant 15 trees and it really wasn't, I don't think, it wasn't even raining during that part. I don't remember raining. Just, just kind of a threatening day. I did, I came, I went to the Kids' Day on April 26th. That was a great event, a lot of people. It was a sports kind of oriented theme. And although Secretary Mattis doesn't like the squishy trucks, sometimes a lot of, a lot of the kids do like those kind of things and they're, they're kind of safe. Maybe the candy part is probably not too good for the kids, but I think that's a lot of the reason why they come, they get those things. They go home with a lot of interesting things. There are some good stuff they pass out, so. There are projects too, art projects and things for kids to do. On April 30th, I attended the CRPD Senior Resource Fair at Lincoln Village Park. Very well attended. We had more sponsorship and booths out there than we've ever had before. And I don't know if you saw any of the photos, but it was a very successful event. And then on, I attended May 8th, the Rosemont Community Association's Annual Meeting. And like my colleague here said, it was a nice event. He was able to speak about what we're going to bring to Rosemont. Rosemont's a very strong community and they seem to know how to get things to happen and, and we're helping them do that, especially because they have access to Rosemont Community Another one is IFEST on May 10th. I attended that at Capitol Village Park. What can I say? It was a great event, like it always is. I don't know if you had a chance to get there, but it was very well attended and they had lots of nice booths and a lot of nice entertainment. Then I, on May 17th, I went to CRPD Community Yard Sale. And that was nicer than ever too, because the previous year we had bad weather. So we had a lot more vendors out there and a lot of happy people. I actually told my daughter about it and they came by and picked up a couple, $2, $5 tables for their new house they just moved into. So they're going to have big parties there, I think. The next thing was, that same day, May 17th, was the California Mermaid Convention at our beautiful Cordova Community Pool. And I'll tell you, that's, it's a very nice event. It was, it was a little cut short on attendance wise because people from Canada didn't attend because of some issues with politics, I think it was. But they did some different things with pricing so they can get more young kids out there. And I noticed in the kiddie pool, there was a lot of kids that were, want to be, when they grow up, be, grow tails and be mermaids and so, or mermen. So that was a nice event. Oh, what happened? Where did my thing go? Let's see, is there one more thing here?
Nope. No, that's it.
No, I think there's one more.
I'm pretty sure that's it.
No, there's one more.
Not according to this, there isn't.
You're right. There's no more. Thank you.
So you can report next one.
You're up. So that brings us to what?
Item I1, Disguise Monthly Progress Report for May 2025. At this time, we received no speaker cards. However, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I will hand it over to General Manager Patrick Larkin.
Thank you, Shelby. Some highlights from this past month. We started our meetings with our consultant from Arch Nexus. As you know, we have embarked on a feasibility study for the center property in the Mather Sports Center. The consultant will be back to our board for direction on the Mather Sports Center first, as to whether or not that particular facility will be a replacement or a renovation project. So they'll be back, I believe in July is their anticipated return. I had the pleasure of going out to the Cordova Golf Course and assisting with the UCP Northern California Terrible Policy Association with their clients at their monthly golf clinic. It was a great event. They had nine participants out at that event. Also, we had our, celebrated our CRPD staff with a barbecue and awards program honoring Public Service Recognition Week. So thank you to the staff on the Fish Committee that put that amazing event and thanks for Matt cooking and we had Andrew out there cooking and it was a great event. The coveted prize, the Bass Plaque, went to the park maintenance crew that works at Mather Sports Center. So congratulations to them. We also donated at that event 415 personal hygiene items to the Folsom Cordova Unified School District and their Families Transition Program. Our staff are very generous and we submitted those to that program. And then the evening after, or soon after, they also honored our organization at their scholarly program, which Andrea, our liaison, was presented a certificate of appreciation. And we also had the opportunity for the graduates to, you know, see them graduate from high school, which is a huge honor for us to be able to be there and support them through that. We also had a ribbon cutting ceremony for the foundation at Hagan Community Park. So that was nice. They got recognized through the chamber as an official 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. I also attended the California Mermaid Convention, which was really quite good. They keep on getting better and better. The quality is very high. It's always good to see how they're planning out the vendor booths around the pool and the grass area. So it's a great place to have an event and they do a really nice job with it. Tended obviously the CRPD Conference, had some great sessions. Recreation staff, recreation revenue is above target 4% and golf course is ahead 3%. Of the 58 projects, 38 have been completed while 10 projects are actively being worked on. On May 13th, just went through that one, so I would do that one. So Rick, you, I saw you a lot this past. So thank you for reporting out, because I was, ditto you.
Ditto, ditto.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that. Rock Rose Park is a new park that we are going to look to do a ribbon cutting and opening officially on June 14th, so that's coming up. The Ranch Community Park, we went out to community outreach for a future CRPD park name. We got some good responses and the board will be looking at the consideration for those names in June. Montalona Community Park, there is a second community meeting coming up on June 3rd. It will be here at this office and we encourage you to attend if you're able. The Legato Development, the city and CRPD staff met on March 12th to discuss the developers' most recent ideas for their long-term ownership and maintenance of the existing lake on the property and the project's Quimby Parkland dedication requirements. We're in the process of doing some significant research on that opportunity and we will be meeting with the Legato developers and the city, most likely at the end of June. The Rosemont Little League submitted a volunteer project application for three projects. One is a construction improvement for the farm field, installation of electronic scoreboard, and installation of a batting cage. Originally, these applications were considered. We had our staff get involved in park planning and development to assist them in pricing out these objects and making sure that we can look to work with them on constructing and getting them going here. So there's permitting processes and legal requirements in order to do significant projects like that. So more to come on that. I want to give Laura Taylor a shout out. She is serving as a mentor for UC Davis Landscape Architects through the Capstone Program. She's supporting two senior students and they are looking to do a development project centered around parks in Sacramento. So thank you, Laura, for giving back to your area of expertise. I'm sure these students are really appreciative of your mentorship, as are we. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jill Nuns, our Director of Parks Recreation.
All right, thank you. So we're gearing up for another busy summer here at CRPD. This past month, CRPD hosted three community events, mentioned by Chair Sloan and other board members. We held the Arbor Day Celebration and then the Earth Day Celebration in collaboration with the RCA. So we did some tree plantings, we hosted an informational booth alongside the Senior Advisory Board, which highlighted the NO SAC as well as the Green Thumb Garden Program. And then Mark Haig led an engaging tree planting demonstration despite the light rain. And so a big thank you to all the staff and the board members who helped out with these two events. On April 30th, we had the Senior Resource Fair. We did have over 250 attendees and 61 vendors, a new record for participation. We had 11 sponsors that contributed, including $1,000 from the Senior Advisory Board. So they are just, they're, they're so, they're so good to us. So we appreciate the Senior Advisory Board. We really couldn't do it without them. Cordova Golf Course, April was Aeration Month with a full course aeration completed on April 16th. If you are a golfer, you know how important this is to the greens. And so we thank VJ and all of his golf maintenance staff team for their hard work and dedication in improving the course conditions. It's no easy task and so we appreciate that small staff for being able to do that each year. Park Services, busy as can be as usual and as you can see from the reports, our Park Services team had a busy month repairing playgrounds, playgrounds, playgrounds. Jim doesn't want to hear about playgrounds. And getting our splash pads ready for what promises to be another hot summer, as you can tell from the weather report for the next couple of days. In Recreation, really proud of that Recreation Staff. Chase and his staff are just doing a great job with our leagues. In NFL Youth Flag Football, we kicked off that season on April 26th at the Heron Landing Community Park. We have record-breaking participation this season with 203 players across 18 teams in three divisions. And then our league is supported by our 33 volunteers, coaches, as well as 11 staff members. So we couldn't do it without those volunteers for sure. Also, our Youth Volleyball League, we have 60 girls enrolled for the upcoming season and that's an increase of 20 from the last season. So our leagues are just excelling every single year and every single season. And then finally, Pools and Splash Pads, we are open now for the summer. It's going to be a hot one, so looking forward to another busy summer at all of our locations. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you. And then with an invitation page for the Board of Directors, Patrick already went over the meeting for Montalona. We've got, bless you, Moonlight Movies, hosted by the Cordova Community Council at the Village Green on Fridays in June, starting at 8:30 PM. We have the big old 4th of July Celebration. You just approved the park use agreement this evening, so thank you for that. That's on July 3rd and 4th, from 11, from 4 to 11 PM. And then we have the 4th of July Parade. You should have received an email from Shelby talking about the July 4th Parade. If you are interested in participating, please let us know by Monday, June 9th, if you are interested in joining us along the 1.5 mile parade route. We've got Party in the Park at Hagan Community Park on Saturday, July 12th, from 10 a.m. to noon. And then the Cordova Cadets Aqua Show is at our Cordova Community Pool on Sunday, July 11th, from 10 a.m. to noon. The last thing will be in your packet from me is the 2025 Calendar of Events. It's just an update. We unfortunately missed putting Party in the Park in the Calendar of Events, so we added Party in the Park to the Calendar of Events. As well as the RCA did decide on a date for their annual community celebration at Rosemont Community Park, and that will be on September 20th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. So thank you.
Thank you. I did have one more item on my report I forgot to mention. I did attend the CRPD Board Meeting on 5, on May 21st, also with Director Danzel. Just wanted to clarify that. So that brings us to item J1?
Yes. Item J1 is our Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. And item J2 is our CRPD Calendar for May and June. And at this time, we received no speaker cards and it's looking like there's no public comment for that item as well.
So that takes us to the newsletter?
That takes us to closed session items. So item K1 is our Liability Claim Pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9. Claimant Jimmy Pural. Agency claimed against Cordova Recreation and Park District. Item K2, in accordance with Government Code Section 54956.9, the board will meet in closed session to confer with or receive advice from its legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Sacramento Superior Court Case Number 25CV006803. And item K3, in accordance with Government Code Section 54956.9, the board will meet in closed session to confer with or receive advice from its legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Sacramento Superior Court Case Number 25CV007644. And at this time, we've received no speaker cards. However, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I will turn it back over to you, Chair Sloan.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to close this meeting to go into our closed session and we'll do that at 8:13 PM. and we'll do that at 8:13 PM.
I'd like to reconvene this meeting out of closed session at 9:16 PM. According to closed session, item number K-1, the board voted unanimously to reject Jimmy Purewall's claim. On item number K-2, no reportable action was taken. On K-3, board took action to authorize District Council to settle case number 25CB007644 of the Superior Court. Is that it?
That's adjourned.
Adjourned. That's meeting adjourned.
Yay! Good job team.
Okay.
Judge Judy?
No. Judge Judy? No. Judge Judy?